Meeting order at this time, all of our aldermen are present, I appreciate that. At this time, I would like to recognize Ms. Bridge, who's gonna lead us in prayer, filling in for Pastor Bruce, who's busy tonight. And Alderman Powell will then lead us into the pledge of allegiance. So you got it.
Our gracious Father, the Son, and the Holy Spirit, as we proceed with this meeting, we ask that you, God, we ask for your presence here, that all decisions are made with wisdom and integrity, that all decisions that are made on behalf of our residents, of our businesses, and our developers, that those decisions are to glorify you, that your will be done. These are another blessings we ask of your precious son, Jesus man. Amen.
Attention, salute, pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. All right, moving on to our, in item three A, the city has recently made some changes in our planning and zoning and building official department. As part of that, Mike McCollum, who has served here in the past, has agreed to come in and work with us on an interim basis. And I just want to recognize Mike and personally thank him for doing that for us. And tremendous asset, and I was stunned that he agreed to come back. Thank you very much for doing that, Mike. Thank you, sir. All right, at this time, item number three E, apparently our city clerk wants to be reappointed. And so at this time, we need to take a vote, I suppose, to adopt the order of reappointing her. And assuming that Ms. Kellum is reappointed, that'd probably be a close vote. But assuming she gets reappointed, I would administer the oath of office. So is there a motion then to adopt the order and appoint Lindsey Kerr clerk, Lindsey Kellum, as our city clerk? Motion? Mr. Taylor made the motion. Who seconded it?
Seconded.
Ms. Bates seconded. All in favor.
Aye.
Any opposed? That motion carries. You raise your eye hand. We're going after the items in yellow.
Item Lindsey Kellum.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will faithfully support.
That I will faithfully support.
The Constitution of the United States.
The Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of Mississippi.
And the Constitution of the State of Mississippi.
And obey the laws thereof.
And obey the laws thereof.
That I am not disqualified.
That I am not disqualified.
From holding the office.
From holding the office.
Of city clerk.
Of city clerk.
For the City of Gluckstadt.
For the City of Gluckstadt.
That I will faithfully discharge.
That I will faithfully discharge.
The duties of the office.
The duties of the office.
Upon which I am about to enter.
On which I'm about to enter.
So help me God.
So help me God.
I just want everybody to know, from my perspective, this city can operate without me, and operate without everybody up here, all easily replaceable, but she's not.
Thank you, Mayor.
Second.
Thank you.
All right, at this time, we, um, we'll move to item three C. Apparently Chief Hale also wants to be reappointed. So is there a motion to adopt the order and reappoint Chief Hale as the chief of police?
Question.
All right, Ms. Campbell?
I'll second with discussion.
I'll second it with a what?
Discussion.
What we discuss?
Let's open the floor for discussion. Teenery. All in favor.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, congratulations.
Thank you.
Raise your eye hand and agree after me. I, Barry Hale.
I, Barry Hale.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will faithfully support the Constitution.
That I will faithfully support the Constitution.
Of the United States.
Of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of Mississippi.
And the Constitution of the State of Mississippi.
And obey the laws thereof.
And obey the laws thereof.
That I am not disqualified.
That I am not disqualified.
From holding the office.
From holding the office.
Of police chief.
Of police chief.
For the City of Gluckstadt.
For the City of Gluckstadt.
That I will faithfully discharge the duties.
That I will faithfully discharge the duties.
Of the office.
Of the office.
Upon which I am about to enter.
On which I'm about to enter.
So help me God.
So help me God. Thank you, sir.
Again, personally, another guy who takes some heat from the, from the community and as I understand, social media, now that I pay attention to that. But a guy who stepped up at a time that he didn't really anticipate becoming Gluckstadt's police chief. He's worked real hard to do a good job, and he's all in, as they say. So, thank you, Chief.
Yes, sir.
All right, uh, this time I'd like to recognize Assistant Chief, Assistant City Clerk Scott Mall. Mr. Mall works hand in hand with Ms. Kellum, and he recently completed the program, being certified as deputy clerk. He went through the graduation program and completed that, uh, and recently at the MML conference. This is not something that is required of his job. It's not required of, some aldermen have successfully gone through various programs that Ms. Kellum's gone through. This is something that he did on his own volition, and proud of you, and want to recognize you and thank you for doing it. Right?
If you adopt the resolution, I will provide it to him to put on his wall. I'm sure his wife will be happy about it.
All right, at this time, there's, before you, a resolution, Mayor and Board of Aldermen recognizing and congratulating Scott Mall on his graduation from the Certified Municipal Deputy Clerk Program. Is there a motion?
Motion.
Mr. Williams made the motion. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Mr. Powell seconded. All in favor.
Aye.
Any opposed? Congratulations, sir.
I appreciate it.
You want to get up here with the whole board?
Yeah. Got it. Congrats, Scott.
All right, item number three E, Ms. Bates.
Yeah, so today we would like to recognize Mr. Raleigh Smith on being crowned National American Miss Mississippi Junior Pre-Teen 2025. So, Mr. Raleigh, if you could stand up here, I'll read your resolution, so you can see your pretty crown and your pretty face.
She's got a crown. I'm not gonna tell her. Hold on.
This is Mr. Raleigh Smith. She's the daughter of Robert Smith III and Dr. Jasmine Smith. They're residents of Gluckstadt, City of Gluckstadt. And she is in the fourth grade. She just started fourth grade at Mansdale. Raleigh was crowned National American Miss Mississippi Junior Pre-Teen 2025 on June 7th, 2025, and will represent the state of Mississippi at the national pageant in Orlando, Florida in November. Raleigh has a history of pageant success. She previously held the title of National American Miss Mississippi Princess from 2022 to 2023, and earned a top 12 placement at the national competition. In this year's Gulf Coast States Pageant, Raleigh was overall winner for the categories of actress, best resume, casual wear, dream model, hard to service, Miss Spirit, photogenic, runaway, spirit of pageantry, sports model, and talent, and was the first runner-up for Miss Personality. And Raleigh is a proud dyslexia auditory processing disorder and visual processing disorder warrior. And her platform is called One in Five, brings awareness to learning disabilities as different abilities and advocates for expanding access to diagnostic testing and therapeutic resources. Raleigh's dream is to become a pediatric physical therapist and work with children who have special needs, so that she can blend her life, her lived experience into fashion, and drive to make a difference. She is off the stage, and she's not on the stage. Raleigh also plays softball with the Southern Ballers, is a member of Girl Scout Troop 5691, volunteers at the food pantry at First Baptist Church in Bridle, and is an active member of New Hope Baptist Church in Jackson, where she sings in the youth choir, she dances with the praise team, and participates in the Real Talk for Girls mentoring program. Raleigh says that she enjoys pageantry because she loves meeting new people, making new friends, and showing others that young people with learning disabilities can be anything they want to be. Wherefore, this is the end of the resolution, wherefore being hereby resolved by the Mayor and Board of Aldermen of the City of Gluckstadt, Mississippi, the City of Gluckstadt wishes to recognize and congratulate Raleigh James Smith on being crowned National American Miss Mississippi Junior Pre-Teen 2025, and also wishes to acknowledge and commend her for all her many accolades. With that being said, I would like to make a motion to accept this resolution from Miss Raleigh.
Ms. Bates made the resolution. Is there a second? Wait. Mr. Williams seconded. All in favor.
Aye.
Congratulations.
Joseph had to smile, girl. That's what gets you. All right, congratulations, and good luck in Orlando.
I'll wish a lot.
Yeah.
Yeah.
It's called a clean sweep.
All right, item three, Alderman Taylor.
Uh, Mayor, on behalf of the entire board, I wanted to recognize and congratulate the Marine Corps Junior ROTC from Germantown High School, who recently participated and competed and won the state championship for athletic competition. I think I also want to introduce the instructor and mentor, Sergeant Major Case, and Lieutenant Colonel Harold when he comes in. This is the fifth time they've won the state championship. So we want to congratulate y'all and recognize you and put in the official minutes of the, of the city. I'll read this, this resolution, and we can vote on it, and maybe someone can speak to the, uh, to the audience about what's going on at the, at the school. Whereas the Germantown High School Marine Corps Junior ROTC recently competed for the state championship, and whereas the Germantown High School Marine Corps Junior ROTC showed tremendous teamwork and leadership, and won the athletic state championship for the fifth time, wherefore being hereby resolved by the Mayor and Board of Aldermen, the City of Gluckstadt, Mississippi as follows, the City of Gluckstadt wishes to recognize and congratulate the Germantown High School Marine Corps Junior ROTC on winning the 2025 Athletic State Championship. Like the end of that is a motion.
Mr. Taylor made the motion. Is there a second?
Oh, it's a second, I'm sorry.
Mr. Powell seconded. All in favor.
Aye.
Any opposed? Congratulations, ladies and gentlemen.
Somebody want to practice public speaking?
Uh, good evening, everyone here. Um, I am the commanding officer of this year at our ROTC program at Germantown. My name is Noah Thomas, and part of the reason why we're here is because of the amazing leadership that we have in Germantown. And an easy example of that is next up, we're gonna have our choir come up here, and a couple of us in the state team, state team here are also in that program. And leadership from there is also translated into our ROTC program. But also a major example is the outstanding leadership, the work ethic, and just the bigger, set by the perfect example of Lieutenant Colonel and Sergeant Major here, there's, they have made that classroom, they have made their ROTC program much more than a classroom. It's become, like Lieutenant Colonel says, a leadership laboratory. And so that's part of the reason why we can say we've won five consecutive years in a row, we're gonna win our sixth this year as well. And yeah, that's all I can say. It's an honor to have this here. They keep honoring us.
We'll get pictures of all of them. My challenge is to push up contest.
That's rough.
You.
Hey? You ever heard of that?
Congratulations.
All right, Ms. Campbell, item three G.
Um, I would like to make a resolution for the Germantown High School Choir and recognize them. Okay.
Y'all don't be bashful. You can come on back. You can come all the way behind us if you'd like. All right, Ms. Campbell, do you want to read your, your resolution?
Uh, the Mayor and Board of Aldermen of the City of Gluckstadt would like to recognize the Germantown High School Choir. Under the direction of Jordan Langworthy, they've been selected to perform in New York City. Uh, whereas this is an extraordinary opportunity to perform on a national stage and represent Germantown High School and the community, will allow the students to grow musically and gain new perspectives to bring home and share with others. Wherefore, be hereby resolved by the Mayor and Board of Aldermen of the City of Gluckstadt, Mississippi, as follows, the City of Gluckstadt wishes to recognize and congratulate Germantown High School on being selected to perform in New York City.
All right, Ms. Campbell, I'm gonna make a motion to adopt this resolution, recognizing the Germantown High School Choir. Is there a second?
Second.
Ms. Bates seconded. All in favor.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, that motion carries.
There would be. We're gonna get a picture, and they'd like to sing for it.
Absolutely.
For the picture, let's all get behind. Hold on, Shelton is awkwardly behind me.
I'm touching things. My hair is touching it.
All of my life, I've been a ten, I've been a girl, I've been a boy, taking my feet into the ground like an apple tree, wanting to live with a purpose. Skin is a word, love is not a sin, people are bad, people are good, just like the moment's a storm, but it's dark, but it's dark, and now she's hiding, yeah, yeah. If you see where the heart is, you see its color. If I ever knew how we could hide it, yeah, yeah, I would take care of its children, become their mother. If I ever knew how we could hide it, hide it for a little bit, say, the world, she is just a child, that's right, same symbol, he is just a boy, that's right, same symbol, she is just a child, that's right, same symbol, he is just a boy. This way you can do right, hundreds of thousands, predictable, staring away, every grave, so they're gone, before the winter arrives. What you be trying to put away, sure, you cannot cut away, we'll be gone, you cannot get over your reality, in physical form. You seen where the night is, it's dark location. If I ever knew how we could hide it, I would flood into a wringer, make your emotion. If I ever knew how we could hide it, hide it for a little bit, say, the world, she is just a child, that's right, same symbol, he is just a boy, that's right, same symbol, she is just a child, that's right, same symbol, he is just a boy.
Hi, guys. Uh, my name is Ella, and I am a senior member of Legacy. Um, we just wanted to start out by saying thank y'all for giving us the opportunity to come, uh, be here today. We thoroughly enjoyed it. Um, and I also just wanted to talk about a little bit of what Legacy means to me and what it means to a lot of us. Um, it's not just a choir. A lot of times people are like, oh, are you in choir? And it hurts me to be like, yeah, because that's not what I'm in. Like, Legacy to me is a family. Um, I've grown up with a lot of these people. Um, and it's just turned into a way to not only share a common love of music, but to also express myself through something I love to do with my friends. Um, I also love it because a lot of these people I would not know if it weren't for Legacy. And now that I have had the opportunity to be with them in such close contact, I mean, like now, these are some of the people I'm gonna be going to college with, all that stuff. Um, but yeah, we've given, or we've been given the opportunity to go to New York and perform, which is hands down the biggest thing we've ever had the opportunity to do. Um, which is funny, because every year, we're almost like, at the end of it, we're like, well, what's next? What's next? Like, we went to Nashville a few years ago, did a, um, huge thing. And, um, so now this is kind of a new thing that we can work towards. Um, yes, it's a lot. Fundraising starts now, but, um, I just, um, I love this group. I love what it means to us. Going to New York isn't about, oh, let's look at the Empire State Building. You can look at that on Google. But like, it's, it's about sharing what we love and sharing a part of us with people that we've probably never even seen before, people who don't know us, but feel like they know us after we sing, uh, which is super special to me, because, um, I think something that all of us love about music is just the way that it can make you feel like you have a personal connection with something that you don't necessarily know. Um, so being in front of an audience of people from across the country, all across the nation, and getting the opportunity to share a piece of what makes us special and makes us a family, it'd be a really, really big honor to us. So, um, yeah, we just wanted to say thank you for letting us come today, and we really appreciate it.
It'll sound better. We've only been in school a week.
All right, at this time, I've been asked to make an announcement about the Mayor's Youth Council. Mayor's Youth Council is accepting applications until August 31st. You can go to the city's website and download that application to submit it if you're interested. And of course, Ms. Kellum has more information about that if necessary. Also, I'd like to recognize that next Thursday, we are having a Gluckstadt Town Hall meeting, what time? At 6:00 p.m.?
6:00 p.m. to 8:30.
6:00 p.m. to 8:30, or when everybody gets finished talking. And it'll be at the Gluckstadt Police Department Building. Again, see Ms. Kellum if you have any questions, and we hope for a good turnout next week, so that many in the community can come out, ask questions, raise concerns, and have a discussion with us about how to make the community a better community. That'll be next Thursday at 6:00 p.m. On item number four, is there a motion to approve the consent agenda? Mr. Taylor made the motion. Mr. Powell seconded. All in favor. Any opposed? Thank you, Dad. Ms. Kellum has produced in our papers the monthly budget report and the eight reconciliations. Are there any questions about that? Item six, old business, appointment of a 20, of the 2026 German Fest Planning Committee. We appointed the committee, I guess, I appointed the committee. I don't know that it necessarily took a big formal action on the part of the city, but, um, Alderman Powell, Alderman Williams, Ms. Kellum, Chief Hale, Mr. Buckner, Elizabeth Tyler, Lee Hutchinson, Jeannie Robinson, Pam Miniger, Justin Allman, and Mr. Bill Weisenberger have all graciously agreed to serve on a German Fest Committee with an eye on bringing German Fest back to this community. The date has been scheduled tentatively as, oh, I'm sorry, October the 25th, 2026, that is a Sunday afternoon, from 11:00 to 5:00 p.m. So is, is my hope, and I know with this committee, it's gonna happen. So I wanted to thank everybody for agreeing to serve and bringing this back, uh, to the community. Is there any sort of vote that we need?
Yes, just to set the date.
We need a vote to set the date?
Yes.
All right, so date is Sunday, October 25th, 2026. Is there a motion to set that as the date for German Fest? I'll then make a motion, all right. Mr. Powell made the motion. Is there a second? Mr. Taylor seconded. All in favor. Any opposed? All right. And, uh, if you're out there in the community and you want to participate, I know that they, they will put you to work. So please volunteer. Let, let one of them know. All right, item number seven, Ms. Kellum.
Yes, sir, just to, obviously, the budget is our main priority right now. We're about to send our notice. Uh, we're about to send our notice for public hearing, uh, for the tax levy, so, um, next week or so, I think Legal has already prepared that document. Uh, so be on the lookout for, you know, calendar updates, um, nothing should change at this point, I'm hoping. So, um, we'll set the tax levy at off the budget in September. Um, that's been our main focus as of the last month or so. Um, also, uh, we went to M M L, I think the board really enjoyed M M L and got a lot out of it. I'll speak for some of our new board members, I think that y'all did. Uh, so we'll be focusing on a little bit more of training coming up, uh, with the department heads, H R, and with, uh, some opportunities for the board members in the fall. Uh, I do have, I, I know I'm skipping over the privilege license report, that is, uh, Scott up to him to update on, but I do need, uh, you guys to approve a, a training for this Thursday for M S U Extension Service. They are coming down to train our department heads of leadership, ethics and integrity, um, and maybe require a, a minute or fourteen hundred minutes, so that's what I'm asking for.
Seven C?
Yes.
Alright, is there a motion then to approve that training? Mr. Powell made a motion, Ms. Campbell seconded, Ms. Campbell seconded, all in favor. Any opposed? Alright, that carries seven C. Anything else, Ms. Kellum, about your general update?
No, sir.
Any questions or comments of Mr. Powell?
The privilege license report speaks for itself, if you have any questions, please let me know, Scott.
Scott, anything, any questions of Mr. Powell and Ms. Kellum about the privilege license? Ms. Kellum, you're gonna handle item number eight.
Yes, uh, so as you guys are aware, uh, grants have now been absorbed under the City Clerk's Office, um, as of last week, we're in the process of, uh, transitioning a lot of that paperwork out of, uh, the grant administrator's name into my name or Scott's name. Um, we've got several active grants, if you look under your section, um, or at the screen. Uh, we've got apps submitted for two new grants, um, for Homeland Security, and, um, those have been submitted, we're in the process of transitioning, uh, the grant management side over to us. Uh, there also has been a cybersecurity and personal equipment grant that has been submitted for, and as you can see, that, there's no matches for all the top four grants that you see. Um, some of the other grants that have been awarded, uh, right now are just in management stages, so, um, a main priority of ours over the next week is really to, uh, get in contact with the agencies that administer these grants and start transitioning some of that over to us, um, in accordance with reporting and some of the management side that we've got to do. Um, so at this point, this is Ms. Ruth's, uh, Ms. Ruth's report, if y'all have any questions, please let me know, I'm happy to answer them.
Can we get the department, the Ds? Go to, and, and I'll give myself a slide to do it with.
Yes, I have them all, uh, listed actually on my, um, phone, which is, uh, but we have, it's like,
You didn't break down?
We did have it broken down, and I'll, I'll make sure there's a little bit more detail the next reports that we bring to you guys in September. Uh, so I do have to ask for a request to, um, add a item to the agenda, Mayor. Um, it's for the Office of Highway Safety Grant, um, for the F Y twenty-six Police Traffic Services Grant Award.
Yeah, that's before we get there, have you taken care of item B, cybersecurity M O U?
Yes, uh, well, that was gonna be next.
Oh, you gotta, you're gonna do the traffic grant next?
Yes.
Okay.
Um, so I just, uh, if this was not included in, uh, the report, but we do have a deadline of August twenty-ninth that we must submit, uh, the paperwork for this grant. The grant has already been award, uh, awarded at thirty-nine thousand nine nine nine. Um, so this is just for the mayor to sign the paperwork and submit it to, uh, to the Office of, uh, Highway Safety. So if I could get a motion to approve that, uh, authorization, I, I appreciate it.
Okay, is there a motion to authorize me to accept thirty-nine nine 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 on behalf of the city for this grant? Ms. Campbell made the motion, is there a second? Ms. Bates seconded, all in favor, any opposed, okay?
And then the cybersecurity grant was one that Ruth brought forward, uh, I believe at the last meeting. Um, the app has already been submitted, this is, uh, just to request authorization for the mayor to sign the paperwork, um, for the award.
Any questions of Ms. Kellum about that?
It's an M O U, uh, so.
Alright, is there a, is there a motion to authorize me to execute that M O U? Motion, Mr. Taylor made the motion, is there a second?
A second.
Mr. Powell seconded, all in favor, any opposed? Mayoral Health Counsel?
Yes, I've got Dr. Sheila Span here to speak on behalf of the Mayoral Health Counsel and some events coming up.
Mayor?
How are you today?
I'm doing great, doing great, um, just like we reported, first of all, on the actual health fair. I wanna thank you personally, Mayor, for coming out to, uh, my facility, to, uh, visit us. We had over twenty vendors to come, and we had different clinics, uh, even pharmacies to participate. I wanna thank Mr. Powell, let us use your sound system, and Mr. Taylor, bring your mom, I hope she had a great time. And I wanna thank the city, personal city workers that gave us the actual date to do it. It was kinda short notice, I was praying about it, it all worked out beautifully, okay? And I just thank everybody who made it successful, it really was. And so we did some extra things at, uh, Church of Pleasant Green, when I could talk to the congregation, it was called Methol Sunday, talking about cigarette smoking and vapor smoking to the young people. Our next project's gonna be at Pine Lake, talking to seniors on aging and medical. This is gonna be at Pine Lake, they call themselves Living Lakers. So we're gonna be doing that on Thursday, and my next big project's gonna be in October, where we're gonna be trying to do our Gluckstadt First Grace Council Hall. So that is for senior right now, and even when we run out of funds, Mayor, we still gonna find something to do to further our community in health, cause your health is your wealth. And I believe in that, and I, when I saw you running, that first five.
You thought to myself, boy, he needs.
That's okay, you know, but, a lot of mayors not do what you do, they're not, and I appreciate that.
Chief?
Do you have a video of that?
Chief beat the brakes off of it, though, man.
That's alright, but you got, and thank y'all so much for your support, and thank you for your time for allowing me to come up and talk about what we do, I, I consider this very important. I love what I do, I'm a pharmacist, I've been educated, this is, this is in my alley, and I love to do, and I love serving. Thank y'all so much.
Great, well, thank you.
Thank you, Mayor. Uh, so it is our goal to take this report, and we're gonna be making, making some tweaks to it, to make it a little more detailed, um, in the coming months, um, and obvi- obviously researching some more grant opportunities for us and looking at deadlines. Uh, one thing that I did wanna mention to you guys is maybe putting together a grants committee of some of the department heads. Um, if anybody's in favor for that, I think it would be beneficial for me to meet with, uh, Chief Hale, uh, our Public Works Director, Chris, uh, Buckner, uh, maybe once a month to kinda govern their needs and what we can start looking for, putting our heads together to find these grants, cause there's stuff out there. Um, it's just, you know, a matter of time.
Yeah, I don't think that our city's so big that we can't include all of our department heads in that, and I think you guys just amongst yourselves, and I'm happy to participate, get together and let's set a regular time to have that discussion. Everybody in their own department should be on the lookout for grant opportunities, and, uh, you know, I know we, we already do that, but maybe we can step up our game and probably do a little bit better job, and, you know, one thing that I think is important, and I know that you and Mr. Powell are gonna do, is try to bring to the board more information on what's out there, what we can apply for, the status of things, um, more information to help us all understand this process, because none of us, I don't think, have any particular expertise in grants, so more information that you can bring to us, I think, the better.
Yes, absolutely, and we appreciate the patience with the transitionary period, uh, you know, as of a week ago, that's what we're taking on, so, um, thanks for letting me fumble through her report tonight.
Okay, you did fine, thank you, thank you both for taking these responsibility. Mr. McCollum, you are back on the hook, alright, item number nine, and again, thank you so much for agreeing to come in. How many years you've got in, in this area of expertise?
Uh, about thirty-five.
Thirty-five years, so, we're so grateful to have you back and appreciate you coming to help us.
Yes, I did, I appreciate the, uh, kind words earlier about the, uh, just a little, I know there's a couple of all have been here that, uh, first time seeing me, and, uh, I, I did, uh, this job at the city of Rensland, uh, as planning and zoning and building official there, uh, for about six years, and then I was Public Works Director there for the city, uh, for, uh, an additional twenty-seven years, so, I've been doing this for a long time, I'm also a retired colonel in the Army Reserve, uh, so, uh, I've got a little bit of experience there as well, so, uh, and, and also I worked here at the city of Gluckstadt for, for, for a year, and helped, helped stand up for the work department and, uh, and, uh, planning and zoning the building there also, so.
And you play the back pipes?
Yeah, I do play back. But, uh, I, you know, uh, it's like I told somebody today, you know, when I come here, I'm gonna work hard for you, and I will try to keep things together, and, you know, I guess my main, uh, main, uh, uh, goal is to get somebody to replace me, but, but, uh, I am glad to be here, and I will work hard while I'm here, and I'll promise you that, uh, uh, if it ain't coming from me or out of my office, I'll be honest and upfront, and, uh.
That's what you're asking for, thank you, sir.
Yes, sir, so the, uh, update on what we're kinda doing right now, I started yesterday back, just trying to, uh, get my arm around what's been going on, and, uh, uh, tried, tried to just, uh, organize some plans today, uh, uh, I worked really pretty hard today, trying, trying to figure out what plans are still relevant, which ones need to be tossed in the trash, and which ones are, uh, you know, are still, uh, out there that we need to, need to address, and it hasn't been, so we, we're getting caught up on that, inspections, uh, uh, I'm getting back in, into that mood and making sure that, uh, no contractor goes without inspection that needs one, uh, right then and there, being a part-time position, we're, we're, it would have been now, we'd just have to try to work that out where we can do that, Chris is gonna be helping too as far as, uh, his input, and, uh, you know, I may have to ask him to do an inspection for it, but if he doesn't mind, so. But, uh, at any rate, um, that, that's pretty much the update, we, we, we've got a couple of items coming up on the agenda, uh, Puckett Ranch is coming up, we're, we're in the re, reprocess right now. Uh, that's, that's gonna be a nice big, good project to Gluckstadt, uh, to have, and, uh, believe Camp before I was gonna take their spot over there, on the outside, so, uh, but, uh, that's basically the, uh, the update, unless y'all have any questions, uh, about that?
Any questions of Mr. McCollum? Alright, item nine B is just an F Y I matter, to see what planning and zoning did. Before we move on, Mr. McCollum, to nine C and D, Mr. Powell wanted to amend our agenda tonight to discuss the Architectural Review Board, so now's a good time for us to do that.
Uh, thank you, sir. Um, so sometime back, we created our Architectural Review Board, with, uh, the thought process was, it's never gonna look at everything before it really went to planning and zoning, before it went, um, before the P N Z Commission. Uh, so that way, we felt like everything was, um, the way that the city of Gluckstadt wants to look and, and everything. Um, so, Mr. McGaw, um, went off, um, once, uh, Alderman Slade left the board, and so currently we're sitting with, uh, Casey and, uh, Syke, and Miss Melanie Greer, it's our two architectural committee members at the moment. Um, so I guess, uh, I guess it's a couple of questions, first, they wanna continue with the Architectural Review Board, does, uh, board feel like this is something that we need? Um, I know, um, Syke had expressed, you know, not necessarily concerned, but she just wanna make sure that if this was something that we were moving forward with, that the board stood with what they were doing, you know, and then if they needed to, um, if they were meeting with, uh, development, um, you know, did they need to go ahead and have that information brought to us first, before it went to P N Z, kind of the, how, you know, the hierarchy, how it should work? Um, so I guess first and foremost, as a board, do we feel like that's something that we wanna continue to be forward with? Having an Architectural Review Board, alright, yeah, alright, um, yeah, uh, she expressed, uh, having a third person appointed to the board, um, since only two of them to come on it, and LA, I say, kind of what we do, vote on something, they got a tiebreaker, so, you know, we need to look at, I'm the mayor, how would you wanna proceed with having a third person appointed?
Well, I think we ought to have somebody appointed to replace Mr. McGaw, and I would assume that we probably ought to wait and do that next meeting to give everybody the opportunity to at least consider who they may wanna appoint?
Sure.
I bet y'all already have somebody in mind, but it sounds to me like what we ought to do is, is put on the agenda for next meeting, um, to appoint a third person, and in the interim between now and then, if you would just send to Ms. Kellum any appointments that you'd like to make, they will have that list, and we can vote on it next, uh, next meeting, okay?
Thanks, I'll make a comment about it.
Yes, sir.
Uh, just keep in mind, when you're making your report, these, that, uh, you may wanna have some, consider somebody that's got some architectural experience. Everybody didn't have to have it, but it's good to have maybe at least one person that, uh, knows a little bit of something about the architectural design and that sort of thing.
Do the two guys have experience?
Casey does, uh, Melanie, just from her, the last, uh, four years, I guess, or three years since we've had the review, uh, committee, she's been doing her board, um, so, but Casey definitely does.
Alright, anything else on that topic?
Uh, I, I guess another question was, you know, just like with the P N Z Commission, um, is this something that, I mean, they spend a lot of time with this, is this something that we wanna compensate these three board members, uh, that serve on Architectural Review, uh, Board, we wanna compensate them in some shape, form or fashion?
Uh, I know Ms. Greer is on the P N Z committee.
And all these, all the individuals.
Yes, science is on the P N Z. Alright, so you wanna, do they get compensated at all now?
They do on the P N Z Commission.
Hundred and twenty dollars a meeting.
A hundred and twenty dollars a meeting, so the question is, do you, you wanna compensate those something extra?
Three, that would, you know, extra, if they do spend more time, uh, with us, will you propose? Um, I propose that we bring up our next board meeting, and let's have some discussion on it, and, uh, and maybe each of the board members can put forth their ideas to you, and we can vote on it at the next board meeting.
Okay, we'll clear down this topic next week, compensation of our Architectural Review Board, and it was.
Yes, not add, it needs to be added to our budget per shot.
Yep, okay, I don't see it in the whole, anything else?
Uh, no, sir, that's all I have on that.
Okay, yes, sir. Alright, Mr. McCollum, now, previously delineated item number nine N C, discussion and consideration of B and B Cosmetic Mississippi LLC conditional use.
Uh, yes, sir, the, um, B and B Cosmetic LLC that proposes, uh, to, uh, or has, uh, proposed approval for conditional use of five forty-seven Church Road, this is basically a nail salon, and the, uh, according to the Minutes of the zoning board, they approved this unanimously. Uh, there was one comment in there about the, about the number of nail salons that are currently here in Gluckstadt. Uh, I, I believe currently I came up with the number of nine that we have currently, this would be ten, and we do have another one on the books, which would be eleven, so, uh, I don't know if that's something you may wanna, uh, consider when approving the conditional use, or, uh, maybe if the zoning attorney right there to make, give you a recommendation on how you adjust, you know, approach that, if, if that's something you wanna do. But, uh, at any rate, uh, it was unanimously approved by the zoning board, then, uh, for your consideration.
And our, our ordinance requires a distance requirement of four thousand feet, and if this nail salon would meet that distance requirement? Alright, any questions, uh, zoner? Yes, sir, your name?
Uh, I'm Brian Cole, um, I'm currently the owner for that, obviously. And, uh, I respectfully, uh, request that, uh, to open a nail salon on that side of the interstate. Uh, so yeah, I'm here to answer any questions that you guys might have.
Um, I would assume you've done your due diligence, that opened another nail salon, and you have not another competition, uh, in that, in the area, so?
Yes, sir.
You felt comfortable that?
Um, yes, uh, just a little background on us, we have been operating, um, in this business for, uh, close to twenty years. Uh, we have, uh, done other businesses in, out in other different, um, cities, and, uh, we said we stole that, um, that, uh, business, uh, to Gluckstadt.
I see, um, I noticed on the application, I put the address in Google Maps, and it looked like it came up, you gotta Google Maps and be something, so it looks like it came up in the Development, the Mr. Danny's doing, everybody pickled all, um, was it a little weird, is that where it's gonna be, in that development?
I believe so, yes.
Yeah, um, I see, um, so you say on your, uh, your little, your. Yeah, I see. Um, so you say on your uh, your little, your city of Gluckstadt that you sent, um, that this luxury salon will fill a significant gap in the market. Um, could you elaborate on what this gap in our market is with our nine nail salons as well?
Right, right. I I mean, it's it's um. I'll say if everyone defines luxury differently, uh, it is 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 an experience uh that we're trying to sell. Where we have a um a really experienced uh team that working with us, um. Now we can guarantee to provide the best uh experience um when it comes to cosmetics like nail uh nails and uh and hair, and hairs. Also, we are planning to provide um head spa as well. Um, and currently there's no nail salon around this area are offering that. So. And on top of that, we also uh providing uh providing um the uh high-end products. Within the cosmetics industry, so.
I see. Um, and you may or may not be able to tell me this. I know I've been working with the uh development to come into Gluckstadt. As looking at possibly three to four million dollars a year on tax revenue for the city. Um, are you able to give me an estimate on what kind of tax revenue your nail salon would generate for the city?
Right, it's hard to say and simply because um the way how nail industry works is like um. A big space doesn't necessarily say you're making a lot of money. It's really depending on how many. Workers, because uh workers are working on condition based. And so the the more workers you 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 can uh, you can recruit to your team, the more revenue uh. You you will make. Uh, so with our space uh being the size of around twenty eight hundred sweat deep. For a process, we're approximately uh looking at around two to three million dollars revenue.
So would it be your statement to say that the revenue that you're talking about bringing in would be for you guys and for your workers and.
Right, right.
It's not on, you're not, you don't pay sales tax on service, correct?
Uh, sale tax on service, no.
No, so if you're doing three million dollars in service sales and you're not paying, paying zero sales tax dollars on that, correct?
Um, well, there are.
You're gonna sell maybe a a thing of nail polish or something that you pay sales tax on, but just your general service, you're not paying sales tax on, correct?
Um, the services, the services across this industry were were not, yes, that's correct. But the um. The products and and and, you know, all the equipments that comes with it, uh, they're, you know, they're heavily invested uh for our team as well. So. They're different, right?
Uh, some other questions?
I have two questions. Um, do you own any other nail salons?
Uh, not currently. Uh, like I say, we recently uh sold our our last uh business, um, just because uh. We want to make sure that we can grow good and steady in this area. So.
And I'm just curious, why did you choose Gluckstadt?
Um, uh, we get a lot of uh recommendations uh from um our current um. Like um clientele, there are a lot, a lot of them are based in uh Madison, St. Louis, St. And uh, that's that's one of the motivations for for us to make sure that, you know, we. Our our clientele doesn't have to go as far to like, you know, Jackson, which then they're even a little bit uh further, just to get the nail salon, so.
And um, can you define, say you're trying to build an experience for the client, can you define that? And would it be um like a walk-in or a appointment?
Uh, we are doing both. So we will have appointments um as well as walk-ins. Uh. The um, what our vision is, is that we're going to have um. Like I say, we're providing other services like head spas and stuff that currently there's no other places uh providing that uh service uh in Gluckstadt. Nor Madison, I believe. Uh, so that's for for one strength, uh, that will be the case. Uh, as well as um. We are going to have a um a mini bars uh there just just for a lot of um, we have a lot of. Comments from, you know, past comments from clients where, you know, they have having to wait for such a long time because there's not enough employees. Or not enough uh nail techs uh working on them. So we wanna make sure that while they're waiting, there's other entertainments that they can uh. You know, that can service them uh as a bars and something like that, so.
I have one question. Where was your previous business?
Uh, it was located in the forest.
Forest, yes.
Yeah, we we had that for fourteen years.
Any other questions, any other comments? All right. For the board then, I would ask, is there a motion to grant the conditional use as requested by B and B Cosmetic?
What motion?
Mr. Taylor made the motion. Is there a second? All right, that matter then fails for lack of a second. Is there. A motion to deny the requested conditional use finding that the conditions. Precedent or precedent to the granting of that use be not, uh, having not been found. Their motion to deny the conditional use.
Motion.
This, this Campbell, is there a second?
Second.
This Bates seconded, all in favor.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Yeah.
Then the conditional use is denied by a vote of one. Good for you.
Oh, something we provide a resolution shortly if it's adopted that way, that vote to your back.
All right, thank you, sir. Mr. McCollum, item nine D.
Yes, sir. Uh, for uh for consideration, there's a Wellspring Church parking lot expansion, site plan approval. Uh, we're requesting to uh increase the size of their parking uh lot from about thirty-one spaces to a total of a hundred and six. Uh, zoning board recommended unanimously to approve this and uh also recommend approval.
Any questions or comments about this requested site plan expansion? Their motion then to approve it. This Bates made the motion. Is there a second? Mr. Powell seconded, all in favor.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, that matter. Mr. McCollum, thank you, sir.
Sorry, thank you.
Mr. Buckner, item ten.
Mayor, your board. Uh, for you is uh request for approval to approve the bid for the uh conversation related to the project. Uh, we had a low bidder of six hundred and twelve thousand, one hundred and eighty-eight dollars and thirty-five cents. Uh, um, Dixon and Bowen. This was actually uh. Below the estimated amount of eight hundred and forty-seven thousand, three hundred and sixty dollars and is within eight percent of the next lowest bid. So it is acceptable or the grant.
Any questions of Mr. Buckner? All right, is there a motion then to accept this bid?
Motion.
Campbell, I'm so sorry, I can't tell the difference between the voice out of my bag. Ms. Campbell made the motion, thank you.
Second.
This Bates seconded. Maybe if you would say it loud. All in favor.
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. All right, Mr. Buckner, item ten B.
I did wanna add at ten A, I need to uh get the board to approve uh the C E and I contract for the conversation project. To award Stantec as the engineer for the C E and I for this construction engineering and inspection project. Uh, I probably doesn't put them in the pack ahead of time. Uh, what that will do is Stantec will be our engineer throughout the construction of the road. They will be our onsite inspectors and keep an eye on the project force to make sure that it goes in and is finished properly. I just need y'all to approve to let the mayor sign the contract.
Any questions of Mr. Buckner about that? All right, is there a motion to approve the execution of that contract?
I can make a comment, sir.
I made the motion. Is there a second? Mr. Taylor seconded, all in favor.
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you, sir.
All right, and this uh fees for proposal approval for Gluckstadt road widening project, uh, the cost to the amendment of the original engineering. Uh, what this is, I know it looks like a big increase. What this is, is we're moving from the conceptual phase of the engineering project. To the field review plan. So they're actually starting to develop the plans and start to get us a working set of documents for the Gluckstadt road widening project. Uh, and that is the cost of the improvement up here. We're looking to increase two hundred and eleven thousand, one hundred and six dollars and eighty-eight cents.
So the contract is just being amended to allow us to move into the next phase?
Yes, that is correct.
Any questions of Mr. Buckner about the Gluckstadt road widening amendments? Their motion to approve?
Motion.
Mr. Taylor made the motion. There's second.
Second.
Ms. Campbell second. Right? All in favor, all in. Any opposed? All right, item ten C.
All right, we currently have an agreement with Roman Master and Master and Associates. Uh, to do the initial engineering and environmental for Gluckstadt park project. Uh, we are needing to do an environmental survey, uh, do a wetland survey, make sure. We don't mess up anything with the detention leg and the surrounding uh wetlands. Uh, that actually exceeds uh the original agreement, which was twenty thousand dollars. Uh, so we are asking the board to increase it for the amount of the wetland survey, which is thirteen thousand, five hundred. Which will increase the agreement to not to exceed a thirty-three thousand, five hundred dollars.
Any questions of Mr. Buckner about this proposed addendum to the agreement? Their motion to approve?
Motion.
Mr. Taylor made a motion. Mr. Powell seconded, all in favor. Any opposed? All right, item ten D, topographic survey.
This is something alongside, kinda going with the engineering phase, but it's a little bit different. This is for the topographic surveying and facility locating for the Gluckstadt park property. Uh, with this one tale is they'll go out and mark the floodway, make sure there's a good topo, so we know all the elevations out there. This will also include us to drain the pond of Beaver Dam that stopped it up, right? So we'll go back to being empty like it was two years ago. Uh, Biggers come back, they'll back up after they survey, we might be there for a little while. But uh, they need to get in and see how much loose soil has actually been sedimented in over time. So that we can see how much we need to remove to get it back to the original capacity of it like.
Nine D C price of eighteen thousand?
Yes, sir.
Any questions of Mr. Buckner about this contract? All right, is there a motion to approve this contract?
Motion.
Mr. Taylor made a motion. Is there a second? Ms. Campbell seconded, all in favor. So any opposed? Mr. Buckner, thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Chief Hale, item number eleven.
Mayor, our update, we had uh three hundred and seventy-two tickets since the last board meeting. Fifteen arrests, eight of those from Mr. Manner, one felony arrest, uh, traffic stop. Got a guy, Kentucky one crawling, uh, seven DUIs and we recovered two stolen V. No update on the warrant served at the time when I got this. Uh, update on the police building, where we decided it went well. Thank you, everybody for coming. Thanks, Jason, for uh, I mean DJ tricks. For allowing us to use the sound system. Uh, thank you, Lindsay and everybody with the city hall that got it together. It was amazing. It went well. It was great. Thank you, Chris, for sprucing the place up on last minute and um. It went well. Um, also thank you to Chris. I got an email uh not too long ago. That baby box is, it's a good thing. I got an email that was talking, Mr. Bill made some great steps. He did, but they weren't up to standards for the safe haven people. So we got an email. And I threw, I sent it to the mayor, I think, and Lindsay and wasn't long after that, Chris had stepped up and got somebody to throw us. Nice time group step, so they look great. Forgot to tell him about it, dig it out.
Yeah, Mr. Steve Chisholm.
And he did it for just the material. That's all he charged the board for, Chris. So thank you for that. Tell Mr. Steve thanks.
Yeah, Mr. Weisenberger's steps were beautiful.
They were.
But we won't find a better useful.
I think what. No, I think what we're gonna use before mayor is every, we have an officer named Kelly Donald that they all know her. She's she's about to decide. Every day I come by and there's like a chair from the break room that's stuck over by the microwave and I'm like, what? Oh, Kelly. So I think we're gonna put upstairs in there for her.
Chief, you mentioned seven DUIs, as I asked you, that seems like a lot of DUIs to me. May may not be. Are we having that problem with local establishments over serving people? Do you have any?
No, it's not so much local establishments. It's just uh good proactive police work out there and just pulling people over and they're just, they're intoxicated.
We're not having complaints about any local businesses doing things they shouldn't be doing. That's that's good. Okay.
You know, we're, if we do, we're gonna dip into it. So yeah, sometimes it's just, we only may, we may only have one or two DUIs, but sometimes we may have seven. So. One of those with a second DUI, so if you get three DUIs, it's a felony. So um, yeah, school race officer, we started doing interviews on that. Think we have one real short candidate. The next thing we gotta do is is uh bring it back for a second interview and we're doing something a little bit different. Thankfully to our SWAT guys, we're going to go out and make this guy, if if he passes, make him shoot. Uh, first before even going out for a job. If he can't shoot, that's out. We're gonna be in a school with fourteen hundred kids, you want to at least get a shooting. Hopefully we will never have to do that. So that's going well. That'll um, the second interview will take place on Thursday. But that's how I have everything going, right?
Correct me to quote.
Yes, sir. Um, I'm reading, I'm a book nerd, so I've been reading a book on hostage negotiations. Do we have anyone that's been trained in that? Does the county have someone?
We actually do. You know, we're part of the county SWAT team. We have four, my my whole command staff basically on the SWAT team plus Eric. So. We have uh Brian McCarthy, who's actually been in school for that.
Okay.
For negotiations. So if the SWAT team needs us, he's not actually on the SWAT team, but he will go out and do the negotiations for you. And he's good at it.
Great.
Sit down with him and talk to him, he'll get it in his head. You don't think he is, but he'll get it in his head. Any other questions?
Any other questions, Chief Hare? All right, good work, sir.
Yes, sir, thank you.
You want to talk about item eleven D?
Yes, next, we uh found out a while back, Mayor, that we're having problems with the air conditioner that come out and look and actually pulled the vents. Or the uh filters out and they were clogged and dirty and just nasty and they hadn't changed them since uh construction started. So that was the problem. Why, if Terry uh jumped on that, thankfully he did, did a good job with that as he does so much with other stuff in the building. But we got two contracts we were offered. One of them was this one, we do it every six months for seven hundred and seventy-six dollars and twenty cents. The other one was around three thousand something. I think you do it, you do it like, was it four ever?
Four, four times.
Four times. So we're going to try and see if we can do it with every two times a year, cause it's cheaper for us, for the city. And if that don't work, then we may come back to you and ask them more. This is what that is. This is basically a permanent maintenance agreement with that J O R.
Okay, seven hundred and seventy-six dollars plus tax?
Yes, sir.
Uh, that's each time?
Each time.
Oh, is it each time? Okay, yes. Each time, so two times a, it's two times a year. If we did it four times, that would be the three thousand, thirty-one hundred and something.
So they'll come out uh every six months, twice a year. And it'll be seven hundred and seventy-six dollars and twenty cents times two.
Yes, sir.
All right, any questions?
I have a question. Um, you said the air filter's been there since y'all opened. Exactly when did y'all open or moved into that one?
We actually moved into it in November, but they were there, I think, before when they actually started construction and got the. The uh air conditioners up and were using them when they were working on the inside before we even got there.
And you said the air, the air salters were changed?
That was one of the reasons. We had a problem with it twice, I believe. Come out, it was, I don't remember what time it was, but they did come out and find out that the reason why it couldn't still.
And so this says they're all gonna come out. And so this says they're only going to come out twice a year to change all the filters?
Yeah.
So, but might I say something? So the units are under warranty still, and so if there's a mechanical failure, that's kind of another warranty, right? What this would be is preventative maintenance, it changes the filters. And those units have a lot of electronics in them now, and it basically shut one of the units down because of that, so well, the filters just popped up. That's what they just do.
I think what Ms. Campbell maybe needs to, maybe we need it going to twice a year.
Well.
Well, I'm good with the fourth half of the year, if y'all are good with.
What we were going to do is try, Mayor, twice a year, and when they come out the first six months, look at the filters and see what kind of dirt we have that was collected in the building. Of course, building a whole lot cleaner now to go during construction. So we thought we would, you know, on every, save money, do it that way. First six months, they pull them out and they're pretty bad, then.
So this is exterior, all the units, or this interior? Interior.
Interior.
Are they down low?
No, they're on the roof.
Okay.
Yeah, they're on the roof. Okay, cool.
Like that?
Yeah.
You would have to get on the roof.
Okay, so they're not in the ceiling?
No.
Like that?
They pull inside air from inside the building, but the unit. I think she was asking for the air. And I like that.
Okay.
All right, exterior. Any other questions?
I didn't say that.
I was gonna say, that says it includes tax, we can't pay that many of them.
Yeah, we'll, we'll amend that, obviously, the city doesn't pay tax for. Otherwise, with that, it did, uh, been made to the contract, their motion then to approve this contract.
Motion.
Mr. Williams made the motion, is there a second?
Second.
Ms. Bates, seconded. All in favor? Any opposed? All right, thank you, Chief.
Thank you.
Anybody sign our public comment? All right, everybody, I appreciate all of you coming this time. I'll make the motion to adjourn. Paul made the motion, is there a second?
Second.
Williams, seconded. All in favor?